All right, good evening, everyone. Packed house. Thank you, everyone, for being here. So what we're going to do is we're going to start with a special meeting, council meeting, tonight. So it's a little past 6:00, March 6th. Can we get roll call, please? Mayor Dibball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris? Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Thank you. We're going to have the invocation led by Councilmember Buckland, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Cleveland.
If you'll bow your heads with me as I pray. Almighty Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and clear visions for the efforts of staff and council will be of great benefit to those who live and work in this community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so with the special meeting, we do have public communication on items that are not on the agenda. Any interested citizens who wish to speak concerning any item that's not on the agenda. And on this special meeting, our general item is the South Yuba City annexation election. And then we'll move on to the regular meeting. Okay. And so at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to our general item of this South Yuba City annexation election. And we have Terrell.
Say, good evening, Mayor and Council. So what this item is regarding is, at your last meeting, you approved the, moving forward the annexation resolution to the county to consolidate the election. When we sent it to the county, the county didn't want the word "mail ballot election" on there, so this resolution just removes "mail ballot election" and puts in "statewide primary election." And so that's what the change is, is just correcting the resolution to send to the county.
Thank you, Terrell. Any questions for Terrell? Back to the council? No? We're good with that?
Seeing that this is just a cleanup on the wording, I move the item.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Can we just have a moment of discussion?
Sure.
As previously stated, that I have previously stated, I believe that the election process for the properties being of the registered voters of that area and not an assessment-type vote or ballot of the property owners disenfranchises the owners of property in which are rentals, and renters would be making decisions for property owners down there, that I truly believe, even though our efforts have not gone anywhere with Sacramento, Sacramento and our legislature needs to look at this more directly, as this is a benefit to the owners of the property or a disadvantage to property owners, and not necessarily to the renters themselves. So I will be holding a vote of no on this tonight.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do roll call vote. How's that? Councilmember Cleveland?
No, yes.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Buckland?
No.
Mayor Dibball?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. With that item done, this special meeting is adjourned now, and we will go into our regular meeting. And at this time, we have some presentations and some proclamations. Our first one is, if we can have Richard Detmer, please step up.
That's why he's in the front row.
My challenge is with IT. The key to the city.
Wow.
There you go.
You're welcome.
So what we have here for you is a proclamation, and I'll have you hold that. And I will read through this so that everybody knows who you are.
All right.
So Richard Detmer was appointed to the Yuba City Personnel Board on February 20th of 2001, and also to our Senior Commission in October 16th of 2001. So for 17 years, you have dedicated your service.
That's true.
Richard served on the Personnel Board through many hearings and resulting in decisions and displayed leadership, fairness, kindness, and integrity in all Personnel Board matters. His dedication and professionalism and commitment made him invaluable to the city. Richard advocated for the senior citizens of Yuba City and devoted countless hours serving our senior community on the Senior Commission. He also was on the Yuba Sutter Interagency Council, an instructor for the AARP Drivers' Safety Program at the Yuba City Senior Center, actively participated in Sons in Retirement as well as serving as Big Sur in 2008, and 30 years in the Yuba City Rotary.
Yeah.
So now thereby resolved, I, Preet Dibball, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of our entire City Council hereby commend Richard Detmer for outstanding dedication to the Personnel Board and the Senior Commission, and his full participation in making decisions and recommendations in the best interest of all citizens in Yuba City. I sincerely urge all of our residents of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Richard Detmer in his long contributions to the Yuba City community.
Wow. I am very honored to receive this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. We have great leadership. And thank you, Steve, as the City Manager. You've done an excellent job and continue to do so, I'm sure. Volunteering has been in my heart for many years. I've done it for many years, as you've heard. I strongly recommend it. When you have the free time, give back, because the community gives so much, and the city gives so much to us as well. So again, thank you, and I appreciate all you people coming out just for me. Richard? Richard?
Richard.
Come on down.
Don't leave.
Hello, dear.
Hi.
You almost forgot me. On behalf of Assemblyman James Gallagher and Senator Jim Nielsen, it is a privilege to present you with this joint certificate of recognition honoring you tonight, giving you commendation and thanks for your commitment to community service through your participation in the Personnel Board and as a Senior Commissioner for the City of Yuba City. Your efforts and dedication benefit Yuba City and the surrounding community, and contribute to the overall quality of life in the Yuba Sutter region. Your efforts are be commended, and we offer our congratulations and thanks.
Thank you very much.
We've got more seats. All right. That was a little bit of shuffling around. Okay, next, we have a public safety report from the Fire Department. We have Chief Pete Daly, who's going to present.
Good evening, Mayor Dibball, members of City Council. Richard took away some of my thunder, because last time I did a presentation, this place was packed. And here it is again, another Fire Department presentation, not that I'm going to brag about the Fire Department, but, and the heavy hitters are here tonight, we've got the previous Fire Chief, and I've got John Cassidy back here, so I thought, so when my performance evaluations do, I'll try and remember to remind the City Manager that there was a lot of attendance here, so. Okay. All kidding aside, we're here for, twice a year, the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department, we get in front of the council and the public to let you know how we're doing and what's going on. So that's what I'm here for tonight. I brought some help with me, so you don't have to look and listen to me the whole time. I brought Jesse Fria as our Fire Safety Inspector, Jordan Poe, one of our firefighters, and Jason Sustorff, one of our firefighters. So they'll each be giving you a little piece. So we'll get through this as briefly but as informatively as we can. Why am I not moving? Terrell? Okay. So, one of the things that we always start off with when we do these presentations is to make sure that we stick to kind of our motto, and our motto is, having an operational background, our motto is very simple, and that is making sure we get the right engine with the right people to the right location in the right time, and make sure they do the right thing. That's what we're all about in the fire service. Tonight, we're going to cover three areas for you. We're going to talk about fire prevention. We've done a lot of neat things in fire prevention this year, in 2017, in this last year. We're going to talk about some of the EMS enhancements that we've added to the fire service, and we're also going to do a 2017 wrap-up on some of the things we accomplished. So with that, I'll let Jesse Fria step right up and start off.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. In 2014, September 2014, unfortunately, that happened at one of our schools, and us in the Fire Prevention Bureau figured it's time to step up our game and create some innovative ways to get our safety message out. And we started with our public schools. We figured that that's one of the places we could start and globally expand, educating the staff and the students of our schools to take that home, to spread that out, you know, twofold. Enforcement through education. We like to think enforcement through education is the best result. Enforcement through punitive actions sometimes don't measure the same, so our focus is education. Our proactive community through effective and innovative public safety services. The Bureau's era of responsibility includes fire code enforcement, fire inspections, building plan review, development services, public education, community outreach programs, fire investigation, origin, cause, and determination. History, in 2015, the Fire Prevention Bureau inspected 518 occupancies. This included 38 schools, both private and public K-12. Out of these schools, 15 were the Yuba City Unified School District, a large quantity of, we don't really like to call them violations, but the fire code calls them violations, but we like to call them areas to increase public safety, or safety. It was determined that our education process needed to ramp up a little bit, and we decided that we were going to put together a training program for all of our schools through teamwork approach, our teachers, maintenance, and the custodial staff. It was really empowering them, the information on how to correct, how to identify, and how to react. Some of the recommendations: electrical safety training, fire extinguisher training, update and expand injury and illness prevention programs, adopt a SASH program for their school, update their policies, develop district-wide plans, provide copies of owner manuals and employees on proper use of safety precautions and equipment. In our schools, one of the things that everyone loves to do is bring stuff from home, but to educate them that residential items should stay at your home and not in the commercial environment. Most commonly found items during our inspection process were electrical in nature. Electricity is capable of causing fires, and it also causes life-threatening injuries. This is where we focus a lot of our attention to educate the awareness of electrical hazards, the identification of freight cords, and how to mitigate those situations at their school, empower them with the information. Some of the items that we have found was, this is an electrical room in one of the schools, this was kind of an abandoned area, however, through maintenance, it was undiscovered that water was leaking into this area and could be a potential hazard. Overloaded outlet. To the trained eye, this looks very obvious, but to untrained eye, it looks like maybe it could just be a dirty outlet. But this is a 20-amp circuit, it's definitely burnt, and it should be out of service or replaced. A heat detector unsecured to the ceiling. And again, this is an awareness situation, not that the schools weren't doing their job, it was just identifying what the device is and how important it is for it to be secured and in service. Freight electrical wires, again, when we do our inspections, we not only look, you know, behind us, under us, but we look for opportunities of damage. The Fire Prevention Bureau provided electrical safety awareness training to the Unified School District, fire extinguisher training, fire safety checklist, electrical safety guidelines, extension cord handouts, fire extinguisher inspection documents, emergency exit and egress lighting documents, and fire retardant documents. So what changed between 2016 and 2017? Did we have an impact? Well, through all of our collaborative effort, we were able to turn this around 64%, which is a huge number. Our perspective, the Yuba City Unified School District has approximately 11,855 students, plus administrative staff, teachers, maintenance, division, custodial staff. From a global perspective, we figured that if we can not only get to the students and get to their parents and their grandparents, that we can spread our word, our safety message. Again, with the inability to, not with the inability to inspect homes, our global area was to affect people by way of education. Looking at collaborative efforts from a global perspective, these same principles learned at schools could be applied at home, having a positive impact in saving lives and property. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Sustorff. I'm a firefighter here in the city on Rescue One. We're going to be implementing some new items into our EMS increment this year, and one of those items is called the King Airway. The King Airway is a device that isolates the esophagus from the airway, or, I'm sorry, yeah, the esophagus from the airway. It's an advanced airway. Right now, the devices we use, they only move the tongue out of the way from getting in the way of the lungs. So you can see up here, you have the patient's tongue in the way. The current airways we use right now, thank you very much, that's a much better picture. The current airways we use right now lift the tongue out of the way, but that is it. The King Airway isolates the airway from the stomach. This is important, because when rescue breaths are being given during something like an overdose or a CPR, the air that's being pushed into the patient can go into their stomach and not their lungs where it needs to go. So the King Airway is very easy to use, and it can be very quickly applied to a patient. And I'm very excited about this coming into play, because it's going to really affect our outcomes positively when it comes to field saves. It's inserted through the patient's mouth and is inflated, these two balloons are inflated, which isolates the airway. That's pretty much it for that. It's very easy to use and requires minimal training. This is going to be going into effect, I believe, in the next month. Are there any questions on this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Hi, everyone, I'm Jordan. I'm on Engine 3, firefighter on Engine 3. Another thing that we're implementing into our medical bags is a drug called naloxone, or its generic name is called Narcan. You may have heard of it. It's now available over the counter. What it's mainly used for is overdoses on opiates. You may have heard on the news how big a problem opiate overdoses are. They're becoming more and more prevalent. 64,000 people died from drug overdose in 2016. 66% of those were, they were opiate overdoses. So Narcan is a drug that we can give that reverses the effects of those opiates. And opiates are drugs like heroin, methadone, but also fentanyl, Percocet, and Norcos, you know, drugs that we get prescribed for pain from our doctor. And a lot of times, I think the word "overdosis" kind of has a negative stigma to it, but we have, you know, grandmothers who had a hip replacement that are on these same pain medications, who may have accidentally taken too much. So it's not always someone who's, it's not always a junkie, you know, it's someone who could be just mistakenly took too much of their drugs. Let's see. So just a brief overview on how Narcan works. We have opioid receptors in our brains that the opioid molecules fit perfectly in there, and this Narcan kind of drives a wedge and displaces those molecules. And so what it does is it brings our respiratory rate back up and increases our consciousness, which opiate overdoses make us respiratory depressed and decreases our consciousness. So severe opiate overdoses, it results in slowing your respirations. Ultimately, you stop breathing, and you aspirate your MSS, or you aspirate your vomit, is basically how people end up passing away from opiate overdoses. It's pretty easy to use, just like the King tubes. It comes in a little vial like that, and they're on the picture, and that white tip is what we call a mucosal atomization device. And so it goes up the nose, and we're able to spray it directly in the nose, and the body absorbs it through the blood capillaries in your nose. Bi County Ambulance administered it 53 times in 2017, so it's pretty commonly used. And if we're able to use it before Bi County gets there, we have a better chance of a positive outcome for that patient. So one last thing we're doing is we're adding glucometers on our bags. Again, pretty prevalent, diabetes, 30.3 million people in America have diabetes. In that same study, CDC said that 80.1 million US adults are living with pre-diabetes. So that's over 100 million Americans who live with some sort of blood sugar disorder. So again, it's obviously pretty prevalent. What we carry in our bags right now is a tube of what we call oral glucose. It's basically a sugar and water, and we're able to give that to people with low blood sugars. Unfortunately, low blood sugar, those symptoms can mimic stroke symptoms, a myriad of other symptoms. So with these glucometers, we're actually able to assess properly and treat properly, as well as being able to cut down on that treatment time. So again, if we can get this done before Bi County gets there, Bi County Ambulance gets there, that's a quicker transport to the hospital. And like Jason said, that all these skills are going to be implemented within the next month. We have our training planned for all three of our shifts throughout April, and I think these are going to be helping the city and all the citizens quite a bit. I'm pretty excited about it. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the last part. We'll talk about, wrap up of 2017. These guys behind me, I know they spent a couple minutes up here, but they've got hundreds of hours in these projects. They really do. We had to go through, it's not an easy task, just those two medications and using that device, we have to go through our local, what we call LMSA, which is Sierra-Sac Valley EMS, to get authorization. There's protocols, there's procedures, there's training put in place, as well as purchasing everything, training. So these guys did all the research, and they did an outstanding job on the EMS side. On the prevention side, we spent a lot of months working with the school district to bring down the number of violations that they had, and really, just did an outstanding job. So I really appreciate everything that they've accomplished. So 2017, let me wrap it up for you real quick. Just to remind everybody, for the audience, in case you don't know, this Yuba City Fire Department, we serve the city limits, as well as an area called CSAG, which covers about 30 square miles, a little over 30 square miles. I know this is a confusing slide, but I'll make it real easy for you. If you look at the green arrows, that's the increase in percentage of total calls we go on through the years. So since 2010, we've had a pretty steady increase of calls, around 4% to 5%, 1% in 2014, and as we, the last three years, we've been pushing 6% and 7% increase in call volume. Our call volume last year in 2017 was a little over 10,586. The red ones indicate if it was an increase or decrease. So our total calls went up, so that block is red, and the green block next to it shows that it was lower. Our structure fires went up by nine, 61 versus 50. Our other fires dropped. Our EMS always increases, that's probably our most prominent call. We usually average about 85% call volume on EMS side, and so on and so forth. So apparatus, then and now, I'm going to talk about apparatus real quick. So the question of the day is, anyone know where the pitcher was taken on the left?
Water tower on plumistry.
Water tower on plumistry. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Buckland. So that's where we used to have our fire engines. I don't know how old that pitcher is, but I'll let you be the judge. But we've gone from apparatus like that to what we have on the right, which is one of our newest engines that we purchased last year. Now, Finance tried to get me to purchase another engine, but I told them I wasn't going to purchase that engine, especially when Darren Gale wanted to drive it, and anything with him driving an engine, I got to do something different here, so. So I talked her out of buying that engine, even though it was a convertible, so. No, some of our new apparatus, we have another engine that the council authorized this year. It's being constructed right now. It should, we're going back for final in May or June, I believe, is when we're waiting until that will be finished. We put in service on the bottom-left corner a new battalion chief rig this year as well. So we've been placing apparatus appropriately, and I appreciate the support of the council, because this stuff is very expensive to put in place. We also have a new rescue that's being constructed right now. We're going, that should be ready sometime in April. So we have a new rescue in April and a new engine coming in May or June. The rescue will replace the current rescue that we're using right now, and this one also have air and light capability, which is important for us, because a lot of times we'll run out of air at the scene, in the bottles that we wear on our packs, and we'll have to go back to station and refurbish them or fill those bottles up. We'll have this ability on scene. The other thing that we're still waiting on, thanks to the state, but they've offered us an $800,000 hazmat vehicle. As recently as the last couple days, we've asked, when do we get that vehicle? This one on the left, we get it for free from the state. The only thing that they ask is if there's an emergency and they need it, that we respond, and we send some people with it, and then they reimburse us. So it's a pretty good deal for the city, and it's about an $800,000 vehicle, and we've been promised now to be here before June of 2018. So hopefully, before this June, we'll have another vehicle they'll be adding to our fleet. Currently, right now, we have 30 people from the region, 17 from our hazmat team, five from our city, out of the 17, going through hazmat training on the right. And the state also paid for that training. That was about $200,000 training for six weeks, and the state picked that up and covered all the costs for the training, our overtime, our backfill, and all those things that were needed. So this is a huge deal. This is about a million-dollar worth of equipment and training that we're getting for free from the state. Also, this year, we were successful in acquiring from the council money to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus, our packs that we wear on our back, and they have about a 15-year lifespan, and we were able to acquire that as well, so that's been another success for us. Another grant that we received was for a trailer from Department of Fish and Game, Office of Spill Prevention and Recovery. It was about $35,000 for the trailer and all the equipment for it. It has a lot of boom equipment in it, in case they have any type of spill on any of the rivers, hydrocarbons, oils, things like that. Our team is trained on how to respond and deploy those booms, and to try and contain those oil spills in our river, which is where we get our water from, or other surrounding rivers. We were also successful in receiving two grants during 2017. Each one had a value of about $32,000 to replace our extrication equipment. You're commonly known as the Jaws of Life. So we've replaced those two, two of those as well. We have five sets on our first five-out engines, and this will be our fourth set, the third and fourth set here. And all four of those have been on grants. The last thing, real quick, is our SAFER grant. It's, our SAFER grant has allowed us to keep our staffing levels at a good level. It's a two-year grant that we got through FEMA, and it's allowed us to pick up nine additional firefighters. But the neat thing about it is, all nine of those, even though they came originally on just a two-year grant, through attrition and people retiring, we were able to pick up all eight of those people full-time. So now those people have transitioned out of the SAFER grant onto full-time employment. The last person actually got full-time employment down in Southern Cal... We were also successful in receiving two grants during 2017. Each one had a value of about $32,000 to replace our extrication equipment. You're commonly known as the jaws of life. So we've replaced those two, two of those as well. We have five sets on our first five-out engines and we, this will be our fourth set, the third and fourth set here. And all four of those have been on grants. The last thing real quick is our SAFER grant. It's, our SAFER grant has allowed us to keep our staffing levels at a good level. It's a two-year grant that we got through FEMA and it's allowed us to pick up nine additional firefighters. But the neat thing about it is all nine of those, even though they came originally on just a two-year grant, through attrition and people retiring, we were able to pick up all eight of those people full-time. So now those people have transitioned out of the SAFER grant onto full-time employment. The last person actually got full-time employment down in Southern California where his family is from, so he went back down there. But what was neat about it is we hired these people and they attended the grant is to hopefully get them full-time employment. And within the first year, year and a half, we succeeded in picking up eight out of nine of those people, which is really neat. And then we have, we've since then, we've brought six more people on to, to fill that position. And, and we've also extended the grant to August. The grant was supposed to end in February, but we managed our money well. We had an extra $238,000. We asked FEMA if we could extend the grant and they said yes. So now we've extended the six people we have now for another six months until August. And then we'll be, hopefully, I'll be coming back about applying for another SAFER grant. So, and if you don't recognize where that pitcher's taken from, I had to do that because my previous boss is in the house. And when we go back to pick up the fire engines, they're in Wisconsin, we have to take them for a test drive. And it's 40 minutes from where they make the fire engines to Green Bay, Wisconsin, where they play football with the Packers, so. So, so I had to get a pitcher with Green Bay in the background. Last but not least, when we hired, we've hired 20 to 21 people in the last couple of years, really filling a lot of voids from people retiring. We had a big influx of people retirement. So with that, we had a lot of training and that's been our focus, is doing a lot of training in the department. So just to kind of give you an idea of how much training we do, in 2017, we did over 19,000 hours of training. And that's equivalent to 434 hours per firefighter in our department. And that's equivalent to 3.5 hours of training per day. On average, we'll train our firefighters about two hours a day each day they work and they do other things as well. So we almost doubled the training hours just last year because we had so many new people and we had to get so much training in and get them to a certain level. So that's kind of the recap. I try to be as brief as possible and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Great report, thank you. Any questions for?
I just have one question. Why couldn't you have photoshopped in the Green Bay stadium behind? Because the former and retired chief has been longing for Green Bay to come back up and rise, you know, to a level of a championship team, so. One day.
I'll take note of that, sir.
Chief, for the, I'm losing it here, the diabetes and the overdoses, is that an extra expense on your department or did we get money to help take care of that for you? Did they give us any free money or is that an extra expense on your department?
That's an extra expense on our department and right now I just absorbed it and within our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, not to interrupt, but to answer your question further, Jason has brought up a good point. We have an exchange program with By County as well. So we purchase them, but as we use them, they'll restock us. And so that's another way that we keep that stock up. Thank you.
Great report, thank you. We do have a request to speak from Mr. Bob Renton.
Yes.
On this, on this item.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Renton. I reside in Livoke and I own a home on Hun Road in the proposed annexation area. And I saw the chief's agenda items, so I thought this would tie into, to his efforts tonight. Perhaps he could correct me if I say anything wrong. Now, back to the last meeting. I think there was some misunderstanding after my comments at the last council meeting. And I personally do not have any expectation of subsidized fire service to the county service area G. Somehow, someone got that information or understanding that I had some expectation. I reviewed my comments and I'm totally baffled how someone could come to that conclusion. However, that's the nature of communication. I do not expect any handouts. I pay all my bills and I own all my own property without any debt. I do not know anyone in this, in my neighborhoods of the annexation area who even understands the CSAG area and this subject. I did not know anything about it at all myself until about two years ago, when then Mayor Buckland mentioned the subsidized fire service of the proposed annexation area. So I began to look into the issue. Now, my last comments, my comments last meeting were meant only to bring some perspective to the Uba City Fire Department unrecovered costs for CSAG. The point is that most of the problem will remain even if our area is annexed. Again, our area is about 6%. That one square mile at the bottom, called the keyhole often, out of 17.6. So even if our area is annexed, 6%, still you're going to be left with 16 square miles of a problem. And the unrecovered costs will remain for many years. Now, this is a problem inherited by the current council and the city management from the Walton merger of 2001. That agreement should be renegotiated. I actually would endorse Mr. Buckland's sentiment on that issue. He suggested turning the CSAG fire service back over to the county if the proposed annexation does not, if the proposed annexation area does not want to be annexed. He said it is unfair to Uba City taxpayers to be subsidizing a county area even if it's just $1. And I would agree. By the way, I checked Chief Daley's report to council in late 2015. At that time, the subsidy level was about $126,000 for all of CSAG. Now projecting that level of subsidy from now all the way back to 2001 agreement, that would come out to about $2 million. That's a decent amount of change. So what is the bottom line here? In my view, Uba City management should take the initiative to renegotiate the Walton agreement, even if that means undoing the Walton merger and rolling it back to county responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Through the mayor, seeing as my name was kind of thrown out there and, and in the very beginning, the bus seemed to back back over me. I don't, I don't disagree with what Mr. Renton has said that I may have said in my comments. I'm very, very clear about this. Where we have a disconnect is Mr. Renton is simply trying to equate 6% the square mile area of the keyhole area to the 17, more than 17 square miles. If you equate it on population, that number is significantly higher, Mr. Renton. There are far more residences and service requirements in that area than the remaining part of the, of the 17 square miles. Most of those square miles are fairly rural in that, in that 17 square miles. So while you get to play with numbers, I'd like you to kind of bring these back as analytical as we can be up here. We are here for the citizens of Uba City, those that live, reside and work in Uba City. And this is where they, they do their business and, and this is where they pay their property taxes, this is where they get their fire service from. In no way do I believe that any other area should underfund through assessment, not even a dollar for, for services. So, so I'm glad that you kind of stick with me on that part of it. But let's, let's really look at this in the future. Should the annexation fail? Again, I'm a proponent of the annexation, just not the process. But, but we certainly need to look for the welfare of the citizens of Uba City not to have to go out and supplement any type of fire services or services that you benefit from on being a homeowner on Hun Road, but yet don't want to be part of a municipality like Uba City. That's fine. Stay out. Vote to stay out. You just don't get the best of the service that you're going to have in the area and the closest service for your fire protection. And you can pay all kinds of, of fire insurance because that's what you choose to do. That's what you ought to be telling. When you go knocking on the doors around your neighborhood, that's what you ought to be telling people. Hey, if we have to come out of, out of Uba City Fire Service, it's not a renegotiation. It's, it's either they pay an assessment or get out. One of the two. That's the way I see it. It's, it's pretty clear. Let them get their service from, from another location. We owe nothing. That inherited process of Walton, we owe nothing through that, that process other than to be able to recover our exact cost for the service, for fire service to that area. We owe nothing more than, than that. We will provide fire service if that's, if that continues. That would be my vote. But, but don't, please, don't misrepresent what that area really looks like. Population wise, it's far greater than 6%, Mr. Renton.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move down to Agenda Item Nine. And the reason we're going to do that is one of our council members, Sean Harris, is not here today. He has the flu and unable, due to doctor's notice, unable to be here tonight. He has put in a personal request through me to ask to postpone Item Agenda Nine to the next scheduled meeting. With that being said, I'm going to have our attorney, Tim Hayes, please explain the process so that we can decide where we're going to go with this tonight.
Yes, Mayor, the decision to, any decisions to continue the matter to another meeting is completely up to the discretion of the city council. And so if that is the prerogative of the city council, the proper procedure would be just like any other motion. We would have somebody make a motion to continue it to a time certain, see if that gets a second, and if it does get a second, then have a vote on it.
Okay. So with that being said, we'll bring it back to the council to make a motion, one way or another.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I think we've been waiting quite a long time. There's a lot of people out here in attendance and I make a motion that we should continue on.
Okay. Do we have a second with that? Continue as far as continue tonight?
Tonight, yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Just as a point of clarification, I'm sorry, Councilman, are you saying just continue?
Tonight.
Tonight?
Yes.
With the conversation?
Yes.
Okay, just, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Not to postpone.
Not to postpone.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
If that requires a second, you have my second on this. There are a lot of folks that, that are here and certainly their time is as valuable as our time.
Yes. Can we go ahead and do a roll call on that, just so that we have it on record? Councilman Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilman Buckland?
Yes.
Councilman Cleveland?
Yes.
Mayor DeBala?
Yes. So with all of us recommending to move on with the item on number nine, we will return back to it as we continue through the, the rest of the night. So next we have our ordinances. We have expedited permitting procedures for the electronic vehicle charging stations, Pursuit Assembly Bill 1236. Mr. Rodriguez, do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez, Development Services Director. This item before you this evening was initially presented before the city council on March the 20th of 2018. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 1236, every local jurisdiction is required to provide an ordinance or to prepare an ordinance for the expedited processing and approval of electric vehicle charging stations, both in the residential and the commercial climates or homes or places of business. In terms of the city of Uba City, this would have very minor impacts on us besides, again, we, we are required to expedite the review and the approval process of that. In the spirit of time, staff presented a very thorough and exhaustive presentation at the last city council meeting, so I will keep this very brief. And so in the past three years, the city has approved approximately three of these. So again, very minor impacts to the local community. So with that being said, staff is recommending that the council approve the ordinance as prepared and as presented at the March 20th, 2018 meeting. And we are also recommending that you waive the second reading this evening.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So, or, Mr. Rodriguez, a couple, just, I guess, a couple of questions and they, they kind of come up, maybe not just questions, but maybe some comments to look at for future. In discussions down in Sacramento and as more legislative efforts are being made at providing electric charging stations, there are, in this rush to, to put these out, there are certainly some problems that are coming about that I think need to be addressed in response to our haste to build the, to streamline these processes. One is allowing dual spacing at charging stations to allow one vehicle to be being charged and one waiting in queue when the, when the charging unit becomes available. If you go to the Sacramento airport and on each floor, there are, I don't know, four charging units at, at the airport on, on each floor. Individuals show up in an electric vehicle, park them there for a week, plugged into the charger. There's no way to move those cars. And that really disadvantages anybody else coming there in an electric vehicle. You might be leaving on dead batteries if, if you're not able to get onto a charger. So I think we need to look at those things. There's a lot of recommendations that are out there, but certainly as we streamline, I'm all for streamlining the process. We just need to have those other pieces, I think, put into play as quickly as we can to be able to allow this to be a functional piece of, of our local laws.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd move the item.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Next we have public consumption and possession of alcoholic beverages. We have Brian Baker?
No? Guess I'll wing it.
You're on, Terrell.
So this is the second reading of the public consumption and possession of alcoholic beverages that was introduced at your meeting last meeting. And I don't have the staff report in front of me, but if you have any questions, we can get those answered for you.
Thank you. Any questions from our staff report from last night? No?
No questions, but I'd move to adopt the ordinance repealing or reenacting Chapter Six of Title Five of the Uba City Municipal Code, Public Consumption and Possession of Alcoholic Beverages and waive the second reading.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thanks, Terrell. Okay, for public communication, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Is there anybody who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda at this time? No? Okay. Written request, members of the public submitting written request at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allocated five minutes. And we do have some written requests, but they're for a particular item, so we will call those names at that time. We don't have any others, right?
None received.
Thank you. Appearance of interested citizens, members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anybody? Okay. And now we have our consent calendar. All these matters under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff or public have requested any particular item to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. And we actually only have one item under there.
So move.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, moving right along. We have Community Development Block Grant and Overview. Again, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor's, members of the council. This is the city's annual, just brought overview, of the Community Block Development Grant. Every year in March, city staff provides just a quick summary of what the program entails. I probably will go through this relatively quickly, just in the spirit of time. So with that being said, the city of Uba City is an entitlement city, and what that simply means is that the city receives federal grant dollars based on a formula grant based on need. So last year, the city received approximately $586,000, and we do have some discretion in terms of how we use those funds. With that being said, the intent of the program is to provide decent housing in a suitable living environment, and then also to expand the economic opportunities of indigent communities or an indigent population. So every five years, the city does have to provide a consolidated plan. That consolidated plan was last approved in 2015. That's an extremely exhaustive public outreach process. It's admitted to the federal government through HUD specifically, who reviews and approves it. Every action plan thereafter has to be consistent with that plan. However, if there's something in that plan that the council would like to modify, we can do so on an annual basis. Every year in May, city staff presents an action plan, and what that action plan outlines is the actions that the city staff will be taking in the next fiscal year. And then every September, we come back to you, where we provide you with the summary of everything we did with the previous fiscal year's funding. So again, the city does have some discretion in terms of how those funds are allocated. With that being said, though, activities generally include housing, rural property investments, economic development, some program administration to administer the program, and then also public services. Historically, the city, in terms of public services, those funds have historically gone to programs that help people, folks experiencing temporary homelessness. So this is just a quick overview in terms of how we spent the funds in this fiscal year. This fiscal year would be over at the end of June, June 30th, to be exact. So again, we did receive approximately $586,000. The administration cost was approximately 17%. Public service activities, slightly over $87,000. Facility improvements, $485,000. There was a carryover of $104,000 that was unallocated from the previous year, so that's why it's reflected at 690 versus the 586. Historically, this simply identifies the public service. Again, these historically have gone to programs that assist people experiencing temporary homelessness. However, we've always provided maximum of 15%. We do meet with HUD occasionally, and one of the things that they strongly encourage the city to do is to consolidate smaller programs into larger programs. And with that being said, that's one of the things that staff is encouraging. So last year, we received two applications for public services, whereas historically, we historically allocated approximately five to six applications. However, as staff's urging, we've had the ability to really consolidate those activities. Moving forward, we had a meeting approximately two weeks ago where we've informed potential applicants that we're going to take the same approach, and again, that's at the encouragement of HUD. So with that being said, this item tonight, it is an informational item. However, we are open to any recommendations that the City Council may offer. Last year, this, one of the items that the City Council encouraged staff to really focus on were veterans. So with that being said, when the applications came in, we made sure to give additional points to programs that targeted veterans. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you. Back to council for any questions or feedback for Mr. Rodriguez? Nope? Okay, well, thank you. I have a feeling the rest of you are here for item number nine. Okay. So we are at item number nine now, Competitive Procurement at the Solid Waste Recycling and Organic Material Collection Services. And we have Steve Gregor.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. On November 28th, you directed the release of a request for proposals for the competitive procurement of solid waste recycling and organic material collection service. The firm that is handling the process for us is Sloan-Vasquez McAfee, and we have representatives from that firm with us this evening. There have been, I believe, about six milestones, markers, that have, we've passed since November 28th, which leads us to March 6th tonight. And so you will have a presentation from Sloan-Vas, pardon me, Sloan-Vasquez McAfee now. All right? Super.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Thank you for having us back again this evening. We are at another milestone in the process, as the city manager said, but we're not at the end of the process. This is an important step that we've reached, and we wanted to update you on the process that has been achieved and also get your input and direction on what steps to take next. At the start of the process, process goals were established by the council. Integrity and transparency in the process, competition to be achieved among proposing companies, that we were to seek high-performance standards, value for the ratepayers, and that ultimately we wanted to enter into a contract with fair terms and conditions. And throughout this, what has stayed with me has been your focus on competition, ensuring that through this process, the best possible value is achieved, and that no stone is left unturned as we look to really secure the best possible future in solid waste for the residents and the businesses in Uba City as you move forward. And we're pleased to be here to update you on where we're at in that process. This was a very successful RFP in that five very, really reputable companies decided to participate. You had five companies competing to come here to Uba City and provide services, and each of these companies are known throughout the region. They all have reputations for providing great services, and they all put in a great deal of time and effort to respond to the proposal. And we certainly appreciate and applaud their effort to step forward and take a chance at providing services here for the residents and businesses. Atlas, Recology, Republic, Waste Connections and Waste Management, as we'll refer to them throughout this evening. Now, in addition to having process goals, such as integrity and transparency, and then competition, we had program goals. And this is where I'm not able to say that we've met those program goals yet. We are looking for your direction so that we can move forward and ultimately meet those program goals. We were looking for consistent, reliable, and quality service, efficiency, responsive customer service, well-planned transition is critical, quality outreach and education, and there was a focus on diversion as well. So we're looking for all of these pieces, and we believe that with your direction in these next steps, we can achieve these goals, and we're poised to achieve these goals as we continue this competitive process. Now, as you know, as part of our process, we solicited proposals, and then we evaluated them. And for the past month, I've been neck-deep, as have my colleagues, Mr. Joe Sloan, who founded our firm, and Mr. Enrique Vasquez, who also founded our firm, they're my partners. And then also, we have Sue Vaccaro, who is here with us, our senior associate. We've been, really, we take them apart. We take these proposals apart. We look, within each of the criteria, we look at all the different objectives that we sought to achieve, all of the different requirements of the RFP. We compare the proposals against the requirements of the RFP, and then against their competition. And then we rank within that category. We give a certain amount of points that are earned within that category, and then once we add up all those points, that's how we arrive at the total points awarded in the ranking in each individual criteria. You might think of it as a test. So in each criteria, it's a test, and there's a number of answers that have to be judged. And did they get 100% of the answer right, 90%, 80%? What does that look like? And then we tabulate the score. It's important to note, though, and we discussed this at length throughout the process, this is just a tool. This is a way for us to filter through a very complex set of proposals and really understand, not at first glance or at the surface level, but deep down, what's being offered and what best meets the needs and achieves the goals that you have set forth for this community. You are not required to even consider the results, actually. They're certainly here for you to use, to consider, to take into account, but you don't have to pick the highest proposer, you don't have to take our recommendations. We're just bringing them forward as we've been asked to do and providing the information in the best way that we can as you all make the decisions for the next step forward in this process. So with that said, I know this is a small slide, but it was in your report, we went through, in the minutia, awarding tenths of a point, and three points here and five points there, all the way through, and we arrived at, out of our 1,000 points, we had two of the proposers that rose above the others. And in fact, there were just six tenths of a point in difference. Really, again, if we were looking at this like a test, one scored a 93.1 and one scored a 93.7. So there's, that is why, one of the reasons why that we are coming forward to you and asking for your direction in next steps, because, you know, in some processes, you have one company that emerges and goes ahead of the pack, in some, you have multiple, and in this case, there were two companies that really set the bar and met the requirements in that way. This is just a simplified look at the rankings of the proposers within each of the criterion that was provided in the overall ranking that we assigned. Now, our recommendation is to continue this competitive process. We continue to have opportunities to achieve greater value for this community. There are some questions that are unanswered. There are some components within both of the proposals that need to be addressed and need to be negotiated. We did not include many of those components in the report because we want to maintain the city's competitive stand as much as possible. We want to protect your ability to be, to continue this competitive process. But there is an opportunity to achieve stronger value for the ratepayers as we address some of the exceptions to the draft agreement, some of the pricing strategies, some of the other terms that I'm sure that you all noticed and pulled apart as you reviewed the report. There's opportunities, and there's issues that need to be addressed. Neither of the two proposals that we're looking at right now are ready to go. They need to be negotiated. Negotiating with two proposers concurrently reduces risk for the city. Certainly, we've been looking at time throughout this process, and so as a matter of expediting the process, it's better to negotiate with two at the same time instead of start with one, see where that goes, and then if that doesn't reach the conclusion that the city wishes to see, having to start over with another. It continues the competitiveness of the process that is so valued by the city, and it allows us to really dig in there and address those issues, the specific items that we reviewed and that came up and that we'd like to further discuss with these proposers. But we need your direction in order to take that step, and that's why we're here tonight. Just a few of those items, again, I'm sure that you all noticed, we want to make sure that we're enhancing the value for the ratepayers. We have some items under the rate adjustment methodology that we'd like to address, we'd like to discuss, and then do some further computations as council has brought up on a number of times. There's some questions about tipping fees and also where the material would go, some other issues that have come up that need to be addressed and reexamined. Another piece is the ongoing risk reduction for the city. There were some exceptions taken by both proposers that we would like to further explore and ensure that we are getting the best possible contract and the best value for the city, protecting the city from risk, achieving value for the ratepayers. Then also, and not included in our report, there were some options provided by the different proposers with alternate ways of providing the services that could potentially provide value. We'd like to explore those, and then, once we're able to fully negotiate and explore, we can bring a more robust report that doesn't diminish the competitive nature of this process or impact the city's position in negotiating. We can bring that forward, and with that information, equip you all to make the decision you'd like to make. So we wanted to provide this update on the process, and we wanted to invite your input and direction as far as next steps, and then any of the areas of concern that you may have that you, if you are to direct us to move forward with the recommendation, or in whatever steps you direct us to do, what concerns may you have, and I will be taking copious notes to ensure that the next step addresses any items that have come up for you. So that is our brief summary. I'm, again, here with my colleagues, and we're all available to answer your questions. And we've been careful not to negotiate here at the council meeting, so I've been careful in my words and choices, but we're here to answer questions and also, most importantly, hear your direction for the next steps.
Thank you very much. You're absolutely right. We're not here to negotiate between the top two. We are here to provide the feedback and take the concerns and opinions of those who wish to speak. So with that being said, I'll bring it back to council if you have anything you want to say at this time, or I can go ahead and open it up to the public. Nothing yet?
I'll wait.
Okay.
I'll wait for the public to speak first.
All right. We will go ahead and open it to the public right now, and we have a couple of cards here for speakers. Dale Hall.
Good evening, Councilman. You have a copy of my letter that I placed on your desk. As far as the public goes, I'm just going to kind of summarize it through talking to the citizens of the Uba City area and a couple of different people in the area. My consensus is that a candidate has emerged as the leader, and it's Recology, and I'm going to kind of keep it on a positive note. But, so, just for a couple of things in my letter, there must be some consideration for actually being the best for the job. That consideration must and must be actually getting the job. So Recology has actually demonstrated that they are the best for the job according to the point score, even that I saw right here now. So that confirms what my consensus was. So I don't really see any reason for you to find out, you went through this process to find out who the runner-up was, so actually, the position, the job should go to Recology, and that's in my letter. So if you guys want to, just please read the letter, and it speaks for itself. Thank you.
Okay. Just FYI, we ran out of cards, but if you do want to speak, as soon as I get through these cards, you know, the next person could go ahead and go on up.
Well, I'm already here. I don't mind going first.
Well, I'm going to get through these first, Mark. Can't jump ahead of the line. Always trying. Okay, next, we have David Kuhn.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Dibbal and members of the City Council. My name's David Kuhn. I'm the General Manager of Recycling Industries that's located at Epley Drive in Uba City. I sent you a letter earlier today. I think that's an important letter to focus on. I just wanted to highlight a few things in that letter. First off, on behalf of our company, I offer my sincerest thanks to you as the City Council for recognizing the need for this RFP process. For the past seven years, Recycling Industries has advocated that the rates in Uba City were too high. Our company has maintained that this process would result in lower garbage rates to the public, and it's clear from the bids you've received and the analysis from Sloan-Vasquez that that's the case. So I commend you for that. I thank each of the bidders for investing the time and the money to be, to participate in those bids, and they came at great cost to each of the bidders. These aren't cheap things to do, and I offer my sincerest thanks to each of the bidders. I believe I was listed as a sub- I believe I was listed as a subcontractor, our company was, for each of the bidders. So I think they see that there's value in subcontracting with the local company, which is the service that we offer. I also thank the city manager for the foresight in what he mentioned in 2011, that a transfer station in this area would be the spearhead that would allow for this competitive environment, and Recycling Industries has invested its own dollars to that end. The matter before you, though, is to offer the two top bidders a chance to provide their best and final. One of the things that I ask you to consider, though, is there's a missing element. That missing element is, what do you get out of this as a city council and as a city entity? The city is an entity like any other entity in the state of California, and at this stage, there isn't any fiscal impact that's being reported to you. This shouldn't be the case when they come back for a final recommendation. You're in a position now where you can influence that and exercise your rights now and desires to ensure that you're fiscally and maintain your fiduciary responsibility to your own entity as the city of Yuba City. These are questions that I think that need to be answered before they come back with a final recommendation, whenever that happens. I understand it's a couple of months from now. One of the estimates that we've gathered is that for you to gather the fees that you're entitled to, which estimates are nearly in the $250,000 to $400,000 a year range, but that needs to be analyzed and presented to you, and I think you should know what that number is before you make your final decision, or what the potential of that number is. And a last note, I'm happy to announce that Recycling Industries has finally completed its application for expansion of that transfer station, and with that, we'll be ready to go and built and done by January of 2019. And I think that should be considered as part of this final decision that they present to you in a couple of months. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mike Lagan.
Good evening, Mayor Diball, council members. My name is Mike Lagan, General Manager of Recology Yuba Sutter, and I also reside in Yuba City at 859 Jones Road, near the Racquetball Club. Anyway, just wanted to let you know that I've been with Recology for 24 years, three years here in Yuba City, and have enjoyed every moment of the time here in Yuba City and working with this operation and the folks that I work with. I just want to thank you for the time and energy that you're spending with this process, and it has been probably the most information about waste and recycling that you've had in a long time, so we appreciate that time and energy, and we look forward to continuing that process. I'm proud to say that we have provided a very high level of service to this community, to the Yuba City community, and many of the folks that provide that service are here with us tonight from all departments, the office, the maintenance, drivers, the materials recovery facility, the transfer station, and even at the landfill and compost facility. So we're really proud of what we provide, the employee owners provide to this community. So with that, I'd like to ask, on behalf of those 120 folks that work for us at Recology Yuba Sutter and the employee owners that you consider the alternate of just continuing to negotiate with Recology. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Silman.
Wow. Looks different from here. Honorable Mayor Diball, members of the city council, my name is Jackie Silman, and I live at 1964 Cherry Street in Yuba City. I have been an employee owner for the past 18 years, and I know I speak for my coworkers tonight to say it's been a long, complicated, and at times, yes, very emotional process for me. I have been your community outreach manager for 18 years, and I formed many recycling partnerships during that time. Although you know me from the community relations aspects of my job, my main goal is to reduce the impact to the landfill and meet our state mandates. So these partnerships and education, our community's diversion rate has gone, as we know, from 29% to 69% in those 18 years. So our team worked diligently on this RFP because it was important to us, and we value those partnerships we enjoy with the Yuba City and have always worked to make it valuable for the businesses, residents as well. So Recology values that contract, and the efforts go abum beyond for our communities. So our focus is always to provide that highest level of service while educating to reduce, reuse, and recycle, which is, again, my job. So now that the bidding scores are submitted and they've been tabulated, Recology did have the highest score, and I ask you to vote tonight to approve that staff's alternative recommendation to begin those negotiations with us, the winning bidder of the RFP, Recology, and I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Raymond, is it Dollywall?
Good afternoon, Mayor Diball and council members. My name is Raymond Dollywall. My wife, Callie, and I have three kids in the Yuba City Unified School District. I lived in Yuba City since 1979. My wife was born and raised in Yuba City, and my kids also. My wife and I decided to stay in Yuba City to raise our kids, even though we both worked in Sacramento. I worked in transportation management for 22 years and traveled the West Coast. As my kids are getting older, I decided to quit traveling and be home more, so I started looking for a local job. Today, I am an employee owner working for the last five years at Recology Yuba Sutter. I recently got promoted to Operation Supervisor from a driver foreman. Recology is a good company to work for a long term. It is one of the companies that I've worked for that give so much back to the community. My family and I volunteered for multiple fundraisers and events. In my job, I speak with customers every day and know firsthand how much they really appreciate our services. My fellow employee owners and I were so happy to hear our proposal was ranked number one so we can finalize the process. I respectfully request you consider the alternative to negotiate with Recology. Thank you.
We also have a request from Gary, is it Bybi or Bibi? Sorry. Bybi? Gary Bybi? No, he's not here. All right, we have Sal. Okay, I don't want to butcher it.
It happens every time here.
Hey, my name gets butchered all the time, so.
Yes, it does. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Salvatore Cornelio, Vice President, Group Manager for Recology. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the team at Recology Yuba Sutter. As you know, and I think you guys are aware, that going through the RFP process is a stressful process for the staff. It's a lot of unknowns. A lot of those stress come home, come home with the employee, and it's not just at work, but it's in their family lives. There's a lot of unknowns on what's going to happen for the future. A lot of our employees would like to retire with Recology. They're invested. There's the ESOP portion of that, and going through this process has been a lengthy process, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all of them for the amazing job they have done during this time and how they've performed at a very high level throughout this stressful period of Recology Yuba Sutter. It says a lot about employee ownership. It says a lot about an ESOP company and the culture that we have, so I wanted to publicly thank everyone that's here today and those that couldn't be here, and I'm sure that they'll pass that on to their team members. So thank you for that. A little bit more, I'll try to sum this up. A little bit about myself, if you couldn't tell, I'm kind of a millennial, a couple years near the millennial stage, or categorized or identified or profiled as a millennial, and I'm kind of an old-school millennial. And I say this because I have young kids, I play sports, they're very little, and it drives me crazy when everybody gets a trophy. It's kind of the new way, it's kind of how our lifestyle is today, but we had the best score, and I feel like the second-best score is getting a trophy as well. I don't agree with that, but I understand the process. You know, I understand the recommendation, but I asked council to just consider renegotiating with Recology because we didn't just pass the test, we scored the highest on that test. So just ask for consideration. Thank you.
Next, we have Tony Sincotta.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Diball, city council. Tony Sincotta, Republic Services. So just want to say how much we appreciate being a part of the process, and the goal of this process is to provide the best value for residents and businesses in Yuba City. And I think, you know, if we support the recommendation to negotiate with both companies, that's really the only outcome you're going to get. We've got two reputable companies, we've both put our best foot forward, the proposals were within 0.6% of each other, and the goal of this whole process, just to, you know, kind of remind everybody, is value for your residents and businesses. So anyway, I humbly ask that you support the recommendation to negotiate with both companies because I think the end result will be a positive outcome for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Avila.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Avila, and I'm with Republic Services. I've been with Republic Services for 27 years, and I started when I was 11. We have spent a lot of time in this community over the past couple of years and have become vested ourselves in this community, and we think that we put a very good proposal together as well as Recology did. Like was said earlier, there are still stones that have not been turned yet. We don't want to come to a conclusion on something when we haven't really vetted all the scenarios yet, and that's where we really are today. There's solutions, but are they the best solutions, and can we come up with better ideas for the city? This is something that you're tasked to do, and you've done very well so far, and we would like you to continue with the process and negotiate with both Recology and Republic Services for the services here in Yuba City. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm out of cards, so. All right, Mark.
I've got 15 minutes, right?
Yeah.
Mayor Diball.
No, you don't have 15 minutes.
Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Mulliner, Business Manager, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 228, Vice President of the Mid Valley Building Trades, and the President of the Marysville Central Labor Council. And I'm here tonight to say that it was a great bid. I really believe that what you guys did here, I disagree with wholeheartedly, but I believe that your hearts were pure and you were trying to get to the best end result for the ratepayer. At the end of the day, the company that stood out is the company that had been here, and originally Vasquez said that you were well within the market value of negotiating with them originally, and you chose to go this route and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through this, and you've come to within six tenths of the answer, and the answer is Recology's number one. And Recology's a union, employee-owned company, and Republic's not, and the unions gave Republic an opportunity to sign an MOU, and they didn't do it. They danced around it, but they didn't do it. So now you want to pit two companies against one another. One pays union living wages, benefits, retirement plan, and the other doesn't. So here we are, talking about, let's get them pitted against one another, and let's see if we can't squeeze a little more blood out of that turnip, and maybe now they'll go to the wages and the fringes of the workers. Maybe that's what happens next. But I'll tell you right now, you have a third party that gets paid to negotiate. So, you know, it's in their interest to keep on negotiating, to keep on spending money. When you have the opportunity to sit with a good company, negotiate with a company, you're going to pass that opportunity or not, so you can continue pitting two companies against one another, and at the end of the day, the end result, if Recology gets it again or doesn't, what have you set here for the tempo for any good business that's been here for any length of time? What is that message that's going out there? Is that we're not afraid to change the rules after the bidding process or after you work hard to achieve what we asked you to do. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Anybody else?
Worst place to be is after Mark. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor Diball, members of council. My name is Dave Vaughn. I live at 732 East Hillcrest Avenue in Yuba City. I also serve as a Senior Director for Recology throughout all the operations that we operate in three states. I'm here tonight to thank you. I think the process made us a better company going through it. As Sal said earlier, thank you to the employees for doing all that you did through a very stressful time. The leadership team spent a lot of time trying to make sure we walked people off of ledges because it's a nervous time, and people don't really understand that part of it, and sometimes when we make decisions as an organization and why we bid and why we do certain things, it's not very clear to all because, you know, it's a difficult and challenging and complex process. However, I thank each of you, Recology employee owners, for doing what you guys do and will continue to do even as we continue through this process. So with that, it really was an opportunity to come up here and thank you guys tonight for what you guys have done. You've made us a better company. We look forward to being a part of one part of the process, whether it's negotiating the alternative or negotiating directly with us, but that is really in your hands, and we recognize, appreciate, and look forward to your decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cunin. Mayor Diball and other members of the council, and also to this most august group we have here today. Dave and I have been involved in meeting with all of the jurisdictions in the RWMA for over two years in an effort to get this thing to go out to bid. And as I see some of the comments that have been given today, I know now why I don't ever run for a city council. The job that you have done takes courage and stamina, and you've done the right thing. I read in the papers, or have read in the papers, and received many comments, as many of you here know, there was tremendous pressure put on this particular group to not go out to bid, but to stay with Recology. Let me say upfront, I have nothing against Recology. I think you're a great team, and I think you do a good job, but I am for the ratepayer, and I think that it is only through, as Mr. Joe Sloan has said 20 years ago, it is only through the competitive bidding process that we get the best price for the ratepayers. I have heard many times that we should stay with Recology and not go out to bid because they've done such a great job. Just a few months back, maybe, can't remember what meeting it was, probably two, three, four months back, we, you, as a council... four months back, we, you as a council, awarded a bid to, uh, some work on Bog Road, and the winning bidder was, um, a company of, uh, from Sacramento, which one was it?
Tykert.
Uh, Tykert, yes, it was Tykert. And, one of the losing bidders was, um, Layman Construction. Now, Hank Layman's grandfather started that company here in Yuba City, back in the 50s, almost 70 years ago, and yet he wasn't given any preference as far as the bids were concerned. And he didn't win, he didn't get the bid, and that's the beauty of competitive bidding. You've made your decision, you've hired, uh, a consulting firm, and they've come back with the, with the recommendation as to what to do, and your decision, uh, I believe your decision should be to follow their counsel and do what they suggest to do. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Nope, okay, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions, comments.
Through the mayor. I just, I need to make disclosure, uh, in regard to what the criteria within our, uh, proposal process was, and, and that there'd be, uh, no contact from the proposers to, uh, the council directly, and, um, I, I did, I've received two phone calls, one from David Cunin, um, and actually met with him in person, um, of which I told him I could not discuss anything related, uh, to the, um, RFP process, and we kept it, uh, to other components of his business, but I just need to make disclosure on that, and then on Tony Sincotta, who called and thanked, um, me directly, uh, for the, the process in which we're going through. That was the limit of the, uh, conversations that I've had, uh, from any of the proposers or anyone involved in the, in the process itself. So I just want to make that perfectly clear and out front.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to disclose that, um, I think it was, uh, two days ago, I got contacted by, uh, Recycle Industries, asking if they were, um, one of the ones that was to be included in the ex parte discussion, um, and I had to tell them that's right, and so we were unable to, we didn't discuss anything else, uh, except that he asked about his, um, permit, what was going on with it in his letter, and it sounds like, um, that's been resolved, and, uh, for his particular business, so.
Okay, and I'm lucky to say, nobody asked me anything.
Oh, you missed out.
I missed out.
You missed out. Okay, um, and I, I will disclose as well that I got a call from, um, messages, actually, um, from Dave Cunin, uh, Jonice, and those were the messages that got left, I did respond, um, and, and basically, I mean, it was more of a thank you, um, but I did respond and make it very clear that, um, I will not have further discussion at any level, um, to meet or discuss, um, anyone involved in the, in the bidding process at this time, um, so, and we left it at that, so, um, aside from that, do we have any discussion or action?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just, just a comment, you know, I want to, uh, acknowledge the fact that your council has raised a lot of questions of staff with regard to the processing, uh, and the proposals, and that, um, you also understand that you don't want to compromise the negotiation process, and so I just want to acknowledge publicly that, uh, the council's very engaged in the process, but also sensitive not to want to raise certain issues this evening that would compromise the process. And I think that, that clarity in that regard is, is well deserved to comment upon, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
I, I appreciate, uh, you saying that, um, and this is a part of the process, I understand that, um, you know, just from some of the comments being made, that, um, feeling that this is the end, it's, it's not, this is just part of the process, so this was setting that criteria, and hitting a milestone, and now having a deeper dive, so, um, that's where we are, and that's why we're back here with the presentation from the consultants.
Through the, uh, mayor, Ms. McAfee, would you go up and get the, um, slide up there that actually addresses this condition, or, yes? This is kind of, uh, the explanation as to where we are at now. There are significant, um, while three definitely, um, had great presentations and, and, um, bids, um, proposals, uh, two did stand out, but there were significant, um, difficulties that needed to be resolved before, um, we can move on, and this is how, how that was addressed, um, by Ms. McAfee, is that, um, uh, there's some questions on the rate adjustment methodology, there's three different types that were put out there, I raised a question as to which one would be best for us, uh, to ask, uh, each one to look at instead of the one that they've presented, um, and then, of course, when this is all, you know, tipping fees, we need to know what's going on with that, and host fees, and many other things that theoretically could change, depending on who does what, when, um, uh, who provides a, a service, um, and I think that, um, we needed to address those with both companies to find out which one of the concerns is valid, which one has more weight to it, to where the vulnerabilities and risks that they're talking about that Yuba City has, um, one may have a higher risk than another, and actually, um, move one company's scoring above the other in different categories, and so we needed to, um, maybe I'm saying too much, but we needed to really have time to look at that in much more depth, um, because I had some very strong concerns about some of the, uh, the proposals of the two, very strong. And, um, I would like them to be addressed before we actually go for the decision, and the only way is through a dual, uh, negotiations, for them to, uh, show us which one is truly the highest risk for the citizens and the city itself, on, uh, quality of service, uh, and also for the ratepayers, so.
You done?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, my voice is starting to...
Okay.
Okay.
Through the mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the fi, the five waste management companies for participating in this, I know it was a very stressful time and period, um, furthermore, um, now, on the other hand, I'd like to do some commenting, uh, our consultant said it's a tie, well, in my eyes, a tie is 93.1 to 93.1, or 93.7 to 93.7, that's a tie. Uh, it's not a tie, Recology respectfully won by six, six points, so, uh, that's just my say-so, my opinion, um, you know, it's been nine months, we have 120 employees, very stressful times, I know it's been said, but I agree with it, you know, they don't know if they're coming home, they got a job five months from now, or whether, what are they gonna do? Uh, myself personally, we, uh, council had mentioned this months ago, that Recology needed to sharpen their pencils, and I believe they did, they sharpened their pencils, and like they have commented here, they did come in number one, uh, if we would have negotiated this six months ago, uh, we would have saved the taxpayers a lot of money, and we'd be a lot further today than we'd, than where we are at this time, we'd be a lot further. So it's just my thoughts, and my thoughts personally is, Recology came in number one, and I think we should, we should go forward with them, and take care of these matters up here, and we could nip the process and save us taxpayers a lot of money. Thank you.
So some of the questions that I have is, what can drive unexpected costs moving forward? That, that would be one. And these don't, you can answer them tonight, if they would, uh, disadvantage, uh, the process further, I would ask you not answer them. Did you see any drivers that were disadvantaged to any proposer, uh, within, within the process? So, what I'm, what I'm asking, were there any drivers within their formulas, anything else that may have disadvantaged, um, any of the other proposers? So that's a, that's a question. And that's, that is one to the other, not, not pointing it at anyone. Um, I have a concern, um, certainly regarding, uh, some of what was put out on the organic side, uh, currently, uh, I'm, I'm aware of an issue at, um, the Marysville, uh, facility for the organics, where discharges, uh, from that facility are above limits that can be handled by, um, our treatment facilities, to include Yuba City's rather robust treatment facility, and, uh, could those, could future discharges then affect, uh, what we're looking at today? And then there's also a caveat in here regarding organics, uh, where there would be, uh, by one of the proposers, where that would be, uh, renegotiated in two years, and that's, that's of concern to me. Future, uh, waste management rates, um, by the current provider, there's, I know that those, there's a rate increase, a smoothing increase that comes up later this year, um, and, and certainly, I believe that's September, October, I don't know exactly when it is, um, but, but that's coming up, and where would that take that to? Because there was a, a lot of assertion by the public that this process would drive pricing up, um, and, and people commented publicly about that. Phone calls have come, uh, to me from the public, uh, regarding whether or not, um, the fees would go up, what would be required, and, and things like that. And when we looked at this whole process, the term was used comparing apples to apples. I see this now as, um, we kind of have two different varieties of apples, one may store better, one may eat better, one may cook better, I have no idea. Uh, but now we need to get down to the specifics of what type apple we talking about here, um, and, and how are we gonna do this? We have to remember that we went through, uh, and this is, this is for everybody, um, and, and certainly how I, how I'm viewing this, is we went through a request for proposal. This, this was not a, a low bid process, this is a proposal process to get us to the next level, and that next level, um, is what will give the greatest advantage, not to the taxpayer, but to the ratepayer in Yuba City. This is a ratepayer issue, um, not a taxpayer, um, issue. Remember that, that, uh, there are businesses that are owned here, that have commercial accounts, that they're not a, they may pay sales tax, and they may pay, um, unsecured taxes and other things, but they're not, they're not a, you know, resident here, so they're, they're affected by, um, some of these, and, and certainly I was pleased to see where, um, this whole proposal, as it has, it came forward from all five of these very, uh, in-depth proposals, really drilled into a lot of that, but, but there's still some uncertainty, um, within those commercial, uh, rates for me. And any assertion that, that hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money has been spent on this, um, for full disclosure, uh, I'd like to know roughly where we are dollar-wise today, to include the, the contract with Sloan Vasquez and McAfee.
It's, uh, two different matters, one is a point of clarification, this cost will be borne by the successful proposer, so there's not, uh, a cost to the city's general fund. Secondarily, uh, this, this is not, this is a package deal that you approved, so they don't get paid more for the process going longer, they get paid that fixed amount, and I believe the, uh, budget, or the, uh, approved contract was about $66,000, and we usually have contingency in there, so I'd expect to be no higher than around $75,000 at the end of the day.
And, and I'd be more than willing to, to throw on, just for a matter of, of argument, about $30,000 worth of staff time at Yuba City, um, that has probably been tied up into this.
And, just to clarify, there might be confusion too, because I know there was a number of $160,000 that was budgeted by the remaining five jurisdictions to, for their negotiation process, uh, separate and apart from the city of Yuba City.
So, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Krieger, for the, the clarification, uh, because, again, in trans, trying to be as transparent as we can, uh, to be involved with, um, the, the proposers at this point, to have a, a number, uh, a great number of, um, the, uh, employee owners of one of the proposers that live here, this isn't about, uh, anything other than, we want truly, uh, the best service, the best, uh, price that we, that we possibly can, in a very competitive nature, um, and the ratepayers, uh, come out the winner on this. For Sal, I love your analogy on trophies, I agree with you. I don't want to be, uh, too off cuff on this, but when two teams play, uh, for a playoff, or we have a boxing match, it's, it's really hard for somebody to walk into the boxing ring by themselves and punch themselves in the face and knock themselves out, um, or to get into a good scrap, that's going to, that the true winner champion's gonna come out of it. That's a football game, basketball championship, I don't care, hockey game, the women's hockey back, um, in, in Korea, was one of the greatest sports, uh, moments for me, I sat there and watched that thing on pins and needles. I watched the, the second place team cry, because they lost, they put their heart into it, and that's exactly what every proposer has done in this case, is they've put their heart into this, and it needs to be looked at, uh, from the greatest, um, level that we can to establish what the very best service at the very best rate, it does not mean, um, and, and coming back in front of me, doesn't mean it's the low bid, and I believe that, that Mr. Cunin is, is going to help me have made a point. Please, drive down Bog Road, from Railroad, all the way down to Garden Highway, low bid. A job's not done yet. It wasn't done to specs, it wasn't done to, um, the, the level that the company was, has the, the past expertise at, and, uh, we certainly has, still have, um, to go through some steps with them to rectify, uh, that road, it still has temporary markings on it, and it has been months, and, and it needs to be taken care of, but that's what happens at low bid. Somebody, you get the B team, and I don't like B team type work, uh, when it comes into Yuba City, we want A team, uh, the way we get to the A team is, let's get in there, let's scrap for this thing, and, um, I, I truly believe, uh, the very best service is gonna prevail.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I think I've already relayed my, um, my thoughts on this, is that this is a milestone, this is part of the entire RFP process, um, so now it's taking the next step. So now it's taking the next step, digging deeper into those concerns that we have. We have voiced them already. And we are, we continue to go through the entire bid process that we've been presented. So without jeopardizing that conversation and discussing that, that's part of the negotiations that we will be doing as we continue forward, so. If there's no comments, other than that, we have a motion, action.
Well, through the mayor. I'm going to step up, and I'm going to say I'd like to make recommendation that we enter negotiations with the number one, only Recology, and move further, move on to the process, continue on through the process with Recology.
Do we have a second on that? So that motion dies, and since we don't have a second, do we have any other?
Through the mayor. In the best interest of our ratepayers of our community, Yuba City specific, that we enter into negotiations with the top two proposers, Recology, Recology Yuba Sutter, and Republic Services Incorporated, and bring back the proposer's best and final offers to the city council for final selection.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's go ahead and do roll call, please. Manny Cardosa, Councilman Cardosa, Councilman Buckland.
Yes.
Councilman Cleveland.
Yes.
And Mayor Didball.
Yes.
Thank you. So now that it's cleared out a little bit, let's go ahead and complete the meeting for tonight. We have our city council reports. Councilmember Buckland.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Had a meeting along with the, the mayor regarding the annual SEEK parade, and meeting with the organizers of, of that parade in trying to establish some guidelines and operational methods that will minimize the, the chaos and impact. And, and I only mean chaos because that's what it's been for 38 years out on the road as folks arrive in Yuba City in droves. Not only do we have the SEEK parade occurring on, on the first Sunday in November, but we also have the MONG New Year Festival over at the fairgrounds. And our population in Yuba City increases by probably about 120,000 people as a result of those two events. And the impacts are fairly significant. So in attempting to build a process that, that will allow to, or assure that certain components of the, the day occur, well, the weekend, I should say, from probably Friday on, is to look at centralizing a command structure, which is something that fire and police do frequently when large events occur. And being able, being able to direct or have responsibility for making sure that, that all of the components are met. So we're working through that process with the temple on a very cooperative level. What happens is when leadership at the SEEK temple changes, so does some of the methodology that, that occurs in how they go about, yeah, getting, getting certain services in, like security and parking, and flaggers, and traffic signs, and traffic closures, and, and all of those things that, that occur. So that process will continue to work forward in the, in the next couple of months. And certainly look forward to continuing to help kind of lead that, that process. I was only involved in, from the city's aspect, as a, as a police officer, I, I actually ran that event for about 15 years. And it has just grown and grown, and, and the problems kind of repeat themselves on a cycle. So we, we need to minimize those. Also did a presentation to the Marysville Exchange Club. This is after actually attending their annual Peace Officer of the Year Dinner. And our officer, Claire, of the Yuba City Police Department, was the Selected Officer of the Year for Yuba City. But also did a presentation the following Wednesday regarding the Fifth Street Bridge construction, and how the integration between Yuba City, Marysville, Sutter County, and Yuba County are coming together to be able to complete this project, and certainly what some of the timelines are, and how that construction is going on. So a lot, there are quite a few more organizations that want to hear. And so we have some little roadshow that we can take out to their Rubber Chicken Circuit, and, and continue to, to provide some feedback to our community on that process. And then, gosh, it was only yesterday, I was down in Sacramento for SAICOG, for the Government Relations and Public Affairs meeting. And, and really looking at, at one of the only real significant issues that, that we're looking at is, is the Board of the Sacramento, Sacramento Area Council of Governments will be deciding whether or not SAICOG itself will continue to support the SB1 program, or if they will go in, along with a group that is in opposition and trying to recall SB1, or, or have a proposal out there to eliminate SB1 funding. And if y'all can't remember what that is, that's what increased your DMV fees and fuel costs. So it's now an indexed cost. And also looking at Proposition 69, whether or not we are in support or against that. So any citizens that want to reach out to me prior to that vote in a week, I would love to hear what your take is on SB1 or Proposition 69. 69 has to do with citizen, basically citizen governance regarding any of the, of the fuel taxes that are coming forward. So I'll, I'll get you a copy of, of what that proposal looks like.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Cardosa.
All right. Been a busy couple of weeks. We'll start off with committees. Attended the Regional Housing Authority meeting. In the process of that meeting, I had been appointed Commissioner to the Better Building Partnership Board, which is also deals with housing in the whole North State, working together with the five counties, five, six counties, helping to get housing in the community, affordable housing in the community. So got another feather in my hat to have fun with. Yeah. Just attended Monday the North SAC Valley Regional Water Management Group. We had our first official regional homeless JPA meeting. We've had them, but it's actually official. We have a committee, and we're moving forward with our five jurisdictions jurisdiction. Get it right? And, and it's, it's, we're all working as one now. We're not separated in Yuba County, Sutter County, Yuba City, Marysville. We're all working as one to hope, help fix the homeless in our community. For city and community events, I attended the Police Officers' Awards Brank with, with council. Attended the Yuba Sutter Legal Annual Italian Dinner. I attended both the rifle and skeet shoot for Sutter, for the Sutter Rifle Team and Skeet Team. And I attended the African-American Heritage History Event with Councilman Cleveland and Mayor Didball. And then yesterday, had the honors of going with Steve. We went down and had a tour of the Fifth Street Bridge construction. And it's wonderful. These guys are top-notch, and it's very amazing what they're doing, and how, and how they're doing it. It's, it's, it was wonderful knowledge, I mean, outstanding. We had a good time, right, Steve? For chamber events, had a couple ribbon cuttings, Sutter Buttes Insurance, and the Life Building Center. It's at 131 F Street in Marysville. And that is a community intake for the homeless to get them set up. There's showers, laundry service. We're all together working as one to help, like I said, solve the homeless. And I attended the monthly ambassadors meeting. Also, the Yuba Sutter Business Connection Breakfast. And the city manager, Marysville, gave her speech. She's looking, making great things out of Marysville, very inspiring. And I think Marysville's going to go a long ways with this person in charge. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you, Mayor Didball. Let's see, on Thursday, February 2nd, I was, had the monthly California Department of Water Resources phone call project update from the Oroville Spillway Project. It's pretty insignificant as far as what you would call the, the milestones, because they've been met, they're in the process of basically cleaning up and getting staging for this next year's season, which hopefully will start sometime in April, for the tearing apart the rest of the spillway on the top, and rebuilding that with rebar in it, and down to the depth of the rock, like the rest of it is. Still baffles me why it wasn't done that way in the first place. The commitment of it being $500, $500 million for the, the actual construction of the project has been accurate. They've been trying to throw numbers out there, the public, somebody, that it is inaccurate. But for the actual construction, it's been an accurate number. But what was the unknown was how much the other part of it, the non-construction, the leadership, State of California and others were going to charge. And that's probably in the 200 to 300 million dollars so far. So they're trying to keep it under control. But I mean, to tell you a project like this, I don't, it's just, you get in there, get it done, and the price is the price, unfortunately. On the 23rd of February, I went to the Chamber Breakfast on the state of Marysville, met the new city manager for Ms. Brown for Marysville. Her experience in many aspects of government and leadership definitely dovetails very well with what Marysville seems to need. And I think her leadership will be very good. On the 24th, was volunteer for Heart for the Kids Run/Walk for the area over at River Valley. It was a little nippy out there, but enjoyed watching the kids and adults and everybody walk or run. And some of them pushing kids in, two kids in, you know, their dual stroller-type ones for running. And it looked like she was, it was effortless to her, and I'm just going, it's nice to be young. So it was neat to be part of that. That evening was the Yuba Sutter Peace Officers of the Year Awards. It was a fantastic night. And all deserving, very much so, the awards that they received. The 25th, I went to the African-American History Event here, over here at the Veterans Hall. Four hours later, we were done. It was supposed to have been an hour and a half, two hours. But whenever Mary Alice Schumett gets involved, you just double whatever time that she says, and you just go with the flow. And I've been doing stuff with her for at least 12 years, and that's just the way it is. She voluntold you, not volunteers, but voluntold you what you're going to do in the program too. So it's, it's a lot of fun sometimes. Let's see, on the, yesterday, the 5th, I did take the tour of the Fifth Street Bridge, or the Bridge Street Project. Excellent. I have a commercial construction background. So it was really neat to see some of the gigantic equipment and what they can accomplish nowadays. And there's only a few of those types of equipment that can get those holes that big into the ground in an oscillating manner in the United States. So it's, it's great to have them. And then also last night, I went to a presentation by a gentleman named James Stone. He's working on the sedimentation removal project, which is, yeah, it's bigger than that, for the Feather River. And I was part of the Lower Feather River Corridor Management Plan with legislatively created for DWR quite a few years ago. And they're utilizing that plan now to try to implement the ability to actually remove sedimentation out of the riverway, or the floodway, which it could be either dry or wet, preferably dry removal, because then you don't have the environmental hands flying in the air and screaming about it. So that is actually moving forward. And there is a possibility that within the next two years, there will be sedimentation removed out of the Feather River. And they've identified at least now about close to 5 million cubic yards. And that is enough to fill five football stadiums. So they're looking at that right now. So progress is being made on that, which nobody ever thought would ever happen in diligence and coming up with good plans. And partnerships do accomplish a lot. Thank you very much, that's it.
Councilmember Buckland's already mentioned that we're part of the SEEK Parade Planning, so I won't go into that. But I did attend the Yuba City Citizen, Police Citizen Academy. It was their first night last Thursday, and just kind of went in there to welcome all the students. Good group of people. Had the chili cook-off at the Moose Lodge. I've never had so much chili.
I did that last year.
And you had dinner afterwards.
Yeah, yeah. I think some chili, I'm not sure it was chili. So, and also attended the Peace Officer Awards Dinner. And then I also had the opportunity to do the Read Across America with the students at Park Avenue. Bunch of little kids, and that was a lot of fun reading to them. I kind of joined them on the ground, kicked off the shoes, and just sat with them. And we had, we had a good time. Also did the attendance at the Black History Month. And yes, I think that four hours was rushed at the end. Otherwise, we probably could have gone for another two. Okay. With that being said, we got back from Tour Day Japan, gosh, three weeks ago? Two weeks, two and a half weeks ago? And they shared a great video with us while we were there, our relationship as the sister city. So we wanted to take the opportunity and actually share that video, because this is the video that they use there in Japan. So we wanted to share it with everyone here, and.
So it's an 18-minute video, but.
Shrunken it down. Yes. Yeah, we sat there for the whole thing. Yeah. You can watch it another time. But we'll, we'll give you a brief right now.
No music, Carol?
No music.
Yeah, their video was in Japanese, so that's why we don't have any. No, our, our schedule's so packed, you don't get to see everything.
So Mayor, did you buy any liquor on the, at the train station before a ride?
No, I did not buy any liquor. I had plenty of wine at the restaurants, right?
One of the oddest pieces is you can buy a cocktail right there on the platform.
Yes. So there's a lot of similarities with Yuba City.
There's our Shanghai Bin once upon a time.
Unless you're there on a really crowded day. We got shoved out of one.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't. We made noodles instead.
We made noodles too.
Did you? We didn't get together. We went to the beer. We went to the beer.
They had something else that you did this year.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, yeah, we, this is, we actually watched them make their traditional shovels. They're going back to actually doing the traditional. There they are, right there.
Yeah, we didn't see that. We saw the crystal making.
That's what it was.
Yeah, we saw the crystal. It was just gorgeous crystal.
We got those in California, herb farmers.
We're surrounded.
Their foods are just, they're pretty.
Thank you. Yeah. It's a long video, but we just wanted to give glimpses tonight.
And through the mayor, if I can, I mean, you brought up the video and showed. And I know you had a great experience. But I really think that we, as a city, need to continue to promote this cultural exchange. We need to encourage our youth of the area to attend this. This is truly a youth trip as it goes there and they get to participate in schools. I think, I just think it's such a culturally rich environment and the appreciation for those that come over and attend, as likewise is shown when they come here. But our community supporting this is just a tremendous asset to who we are, not only as a community, but their community. And that friendship that will continue to evolve step by step just by having the opportunity to attend. It's amazing, so.
Absolutely. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to do the video is actually to have it out there. So people can actually view the video. And it is sister city. We want to get the kids, get families to know what the sister city is all about, understand the program. Because we're always pushing to try to get the kids interested to come. But a lot of people still don't know a lot of the details with the program itself. So we'll make a bigger effort to get that word out. But when they showed us this video, immediately we're like, can we use the video? So we will do our, I think it has an English translation to it. But it's, okay, yeah. So we'll try. But any way we can spread that word. But it is a great cultural experience in so many ways. And just to see their education system, wow. Impressive, impressive.
Just a quick comment on that. This trip to Toray and the summer at City Hall are two of the ways that our community can expand the horizons of youth that are kind of just, you know, waffling between, well, maybe this, maybe that. And I have watched even some of the ones that have gone to Japan and watched the change of their outlook of life and change of classes that they decide to go through. And actually, they're going to be, most likely, larger contributors to the community because they've taken the time to go. And so I have been over there four times. But three times I paid for it myself. And the experiences that I've seen have been very encouraging for the youth of our community. So we need to get 16 going over there every time. Because, man, they just, they come back really changed.
We had a large group. All right, with that, we will adjourn our regular and special meeting for tonight. Thank you.